I understand we're back on the air on the internet now. We apologize for the delay, but we have technical difficulties every now and then, just as anyone else does. Paso Robles City Council has been called to order. All members are present. We've had the pledge of allegiance, and now we are at the invocation if Pastor Sheehan is with us.
Yes, I'm here. Lord God, we ask your blessings upon Mayor Martin, Councilperson Gregory, Hammond, Garcia, and Strong. Fill them with the spirit of wisdom and revelation and the knowledge of God for every decision before them tonight. Good Father, bless our law enforcement and emergency services personnel who bravely serve our community. Bless our city staff with the grace they need to manage and care for our city. Father, we thank you for your many blessings poured out on Paso Robles, and we ask this in your precious name. Amen.
Yeah, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
And Mayor Martin?
Here. All council members are present. I want to call attention to the fact that on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing for the redistricting issue. That public hearing will occur no earlier than 7:00 PM, and it may occur after 7:00 PM, but if it does, it will be as soon after 7:00 PM as possible. So if you're interested in that item, we will not be discussing it prior to 7:00 PM this evening. Like to go into staff introductions. We'll go around the room, starting on my right, please.
Warren Fraze, Community Development Director, with me. Tonight is Darren Nash, our city planner.
Melissa Boyer, City Clerk, joined by Shawna Howenstein, Civic Engagement Coordinator, and Karen Jackson, IT Technician.
Elizabeth Hall, City Attorney.
Thank you. Do we have any staff online tonight?
Damian North, Police Chief.
Dita S. Baranza, Capital Projects Engineer.
Thank you, and welcome one and all. Prior to this meeting, we had an announced closed session meeting of the Paso Robles City Council. I will now ask the city attorney to give us any reportable action from that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We went into closed session on one item. It was a public employee evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 for the city manager position, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. We move now to our regular agenda. First off, we have presentations. Item number one is for Read Across America. Accepting this proclamation tonight will be our city librarian, Angelica Fortin, and I'm going to ask her to come to the microphone at the lat turn because I want to make sure that everybody hears everyone's comments.
Thank you.
So I'd like to start off by reading National Read Across America Day, celebrating the birth of Dr. Seuss. Whereas the citizens of Paso Robles stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas Paso Robles has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in the principle that educational investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. Whereas National Education Association's Read Across America Day is a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's 118th birthday, March the 2nd, 2022, and promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students. Whereas reading to children is proven to develop their language skills, expand their vocabulary, build their self-confidence, and cultivate their awareness of the world around them. And whereas the city of Paso Robles celebrates literacy, fosters a love of reading, and encourages imagination by making books and early literacy learning opportunities accessible to children and their caregivers all year long. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, and speaking on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby urge all citizens to join me in celebrating Read Across America Day and the birthday of renowned author Dr. Seuss by assuring that every child has the opportunity to experience the joy of reading. And Ms. Fortin, I turn it over to you.
I enthusiastically accept this proclamation on behalf of readers of all ages throughout Paso Robles, and I remind you in the words of Dr. Seuss, "You can find magic wherever you look. Sit back and relax. All you need is a book." Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the service to our community and to communities beyond our city.
Absolutely.
By the Paso Robles City Library.
Thank you.
Item number two, Barney Schwartz Park Field Condition Evaluation Presentation. Juliette Dolan.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, and good evening, council members. In light of concerns expressed by sports groups, city council recently directed staff to hire an outside consultant to evaluate the condition of the four softball fields at Barney Schwartz Park. Additionally, staff requested a soils analysis of the infield areas. This evening, I am pleased to welcome Christian Harris, Associate Principal at SSA Landscape Architects, to provide the results of his analysis of the Barney Schwartz Park softball fields. Mr. Harris.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate you taking your time tonight to listen to this. My name's Christian Harris. As Julie mentioned, I'm Associate Principal at SSA Landscape Architects, and we were hired by the city of Paso Robles to investigate the infield finds at Barney Schwartz Park. So we're here today because there was concern from the local community about the safety and playability of the infield, of the four fields at Barney Schwartz Park. The city hired us to evaluate the conditions of the field, so we will provide an analysis of what we found with the infield conditions and suggestions for potential improvement to those fields. A little bit about us, we're a landscape architecture firm that specializes in the design of outdoor spaces. We've designed numerous sports facilities throughout central and northern California, including a number of softball and baseball fields, and are very well familiar with the various infield materials that are out there. Our methodology for reviewing the infield finds was to first provide a visual inspection of the fields. We wanted to look and make sure there was no safety hazards or concerns or obvious conditions that would raise a concern. We wanted to check the depth of the infield material, or skin as it is called at times. We wanted to do an analysis of the slopes of the field to make sure that they were in a safe tolerance. We wanted to do a ribbon test. We wanted to perform a soils laboratory test that looked at the composition of sand, silt, and clay of the infield mix. And then ultimately, we wanted to take that analysis and compare it to different infield products to see how that compares and how that stacks up. So when we first looked at the fields, we found them evenly graded and well-maintained. We understand that the city had recently done a spring refresh, as many cities will do, so we were looking at it as a snapshot in time. We can't speak to the conditions later on in the season, but the day that we looked at it, everything looked well-maintained. No obvious dips or potholes or things that would cause a player to trip. We checked the depth of material at multiple places. Our methodology there was if we were looking at it from a player standpoint and a safety standpoint, typically players will slide going into second, third, or home plate as they're trying to avoid a tag. That's potentially an area where if you have a thin infield material, a player could be harmed, so we wanted to look at depth at those places. We also visually inspected areas where players would traditionally stand at second, third, short, to make sure there was no safety concerns there. We checked slopes with the use of a calibrated four-foot smart level at various locations. Typically, that's performed when you look at the pitcher's mound, in between the pitcher's mound and the various bases. Additionally, we performed a ribbon test to assess the rough clay content of the field. And what that is, is you grab a small handful of infield material, mix it with water, and create a ball. You squeeze it in between your hand with your thumb, and the higher the clay content will produce a longer ribbon of material. So this is a rough test, but it does give you an analysis of how much clay may or may not be in the material. And then finally, we had material from all four fields sent to an independent laboratory for soils analysis. What we found was that in general, the fields ranged from four to eight inches in depth. This was checked in four places on each of the four fields. Typical range is four to six inches, so that very much fell into what we would expect to see in fields. Slopes ranged from 0.2 to 1.6%. In a perfect world, what you would see is slopes at 0.5%, but in practice, you have to tie into existing grades around the site, so there is some variability in as-built conditions. What we wanted to see was slopes under 2%. If they exceed 2%, you start potentially getting into a safety concern from a playability standpoint. We did not see that. The ribbon test would indicate a mix that was high in sand with clay, but not a lot. So we did not get a real long ribbon out of there, and it did appear to be a fairly sandy mix. Now, the city has noted that this is the Pro Gold infield finds from galed materials. We've used that product on numerous fields, and visually, that appeared to be what it When we received our soils analysis from the testing laboratory, all four fields were slightly different, but we're within a couple percentage points of each other, and on average, what we found was a mix that was 69% sand, 19% silt, and 13% clay. We compared that to known Pro Gold infield mix, which we have soil composition analysis from, from the manufacturer, and we found that that typical mix is 68% sand, 16% silt, and 16% clay. So very much what we'd expect to find there. The American Society of Testing Materials, or ASTM, has set a standard for infield mixes. So this is intended to be an objective standard that manufacturers can use when they're developing their infield mix. That mix allows for zero gravel, 0% gravel, 60 to 70% sand, and 40 to 50% combination of silt and clay. So what we found at Barney Schwartz was all four fields were within that ASTM standard So with those tests, the general findings was we felt the fields were in good condition and well-maintained. The infield depths were consistent with what we'd expect to see, in that we found four to eight inches. Typical is four to six inches, so we are right in our range there. I would say that as we saw the fields, they would be safe and considered safe in all conditions as they were found. The infield mix did meet the ASTM standard, so that is an objective standard that the fields did pass. This particular mix is widely applied throughout the industry. And in fact, on a personal note, we have designed a project for the city of South San Francisco that was grant-funded through the Baseball Tomorrow Fund. That is through Major League Baseball. They actually require that you use the specific mix on that field. So we can say confidently that this is a mix that is widely used throughout baseball and softball. Objectively, or subjectively rather, our firm does prefer a mix that has additional clay to it, but we can say that this mix is objectively appropriate for the use. Now, in terms of maintenance, there is some concern from the local community, and I think that they do have some valid concerns. This particular mix does have a higher sand component than other comparable mixes. As such, it doesn't retain water very well, and it drains rapidly and will become compact over time. In fact, I went out there probably end of January. We've had a dry spell. Field one was extremely hard, and I did have a hard time digging pits in there. Field two, three, and four was much more easily workable, so I can see over the course of a playing season how this field could set up and compact. What that means is it does require a certain amount of maintenance, and with this mix, maybe more so than with other mixes, moisture is going to be a very critical consideration. That would soften that mix, help with the compaction, and make a more playable surface. Additionally, multiple times a season, it would be beneficial, our recommendation would be beneficial, to use a nail drag to scarify the top quarter inch to half inch of the infield mix. What that does is create a nice cap that's good for playability. If a player comes to slide, there's a little give to it, and it creates nice hops, as they say in baseball, to allow a nice even ball bounce. Over time, no doubt this gets compacted, so that will help with some of those compaction In terms of recommendations and how to improve the situation, so as noted, this is a very appropriate mix, but it could probably be improved. We would recommend the addition of a calcined clay product or field conditioner. Our recommendation would be to do a trial on one field rather than to apply to all four and see if it meets the requirements of the local community. The goal with this product would be to help with moisture retention and to create a little bit more cushion and to aid in compaction. So hopefully you get some of those better hops we're looking for. The mix would hold on to moisture a little bit longer, which would help the overall compaction and playability of the mix. If it was found through the city and through the local community that this was still not sufficient, there are other products out there. We personally use a product called the Pack Belt Infield Finds, which is probably the largest-used infield mix in northern California certainly, and has real good feedback from players and user groups. That mix does have a higher clay content, which allows for greater moisture retention, which I, my personal opinion, is largely the issue that's happening out there. In conclusion, what we saw at the time of observation was that the playing surface is safe. The surface is a well-known product that's used throughout the industry for softball and for baseball. When properly maintained with proper moisture, objectively, this is a suitable product for the use. We would recommend the use of a field conditioner on one field to see if that helps conditions and helps meet requirements of the user groups. And if all else fails, you could consider an alternate product to replace the infield mix. Thank you for your time, and any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you very much for that report. This is a presentation item. No action is required of the council. That being said, we'll go to council questions. Mr. Gregory?
Yes, thank you very much for your report. So when properly maintained, what does that mean?
Well, fields require a certain amount of maintenance. So typically, most fields before games or in between games, they'll use a drag mat to come around and even out any inconsistencies. Moisture is a critical component to the fields, and especially with a mix like this, which is higher in a sand content than some of the other mixes. Dries out quick, so you've got to maintain a certain amount of moisture. That means watering maybe the evening before tournaments, maybe applying water in between games. Most fields, and my understanding is these fields do as well, have a quick coupler for connecting a hose to behind the pitching mound, so it makes for easy maintenance. Additionally, that nail drag that we showed, I think, will be critical multiple times throughout the season, given this particular mix and the high sand content and its proclivity for compaction.
So just more frequent maintenance, and then maybe try one of the fields with more clay, mix in it, and see how it goes. Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Christian, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, did you see any evidence of improper maintenance out there?
What we saw, now granted, we just saw a snapshot in time. I can't tell you how the fields are being maintained, but the day that we were out there, the fields looked very well-maintained. I saw no evidence of improper maintenance.
And that was after our staff had gone through and proved them, right? Yeah, we've had testimony that some of the volunteer groups that are helping, which we need that help, probably aren't doing exactly the way they should, and so I just want to make sure that you didn't see any major failures out there like that, or maybe it's been corrected at this point.
I can't speak to how it's being maintained outside of the day that we saw it, but it was very well-maintained that particular.
Right, and then so obviously, I saw your numbers there, and it looks like we certainly could to be more in line with the standard. We could add more clay. Do you have some sort of a device that mixes that clay in down? In other words, if you just, I saw the photos sprinkling, it doesn't really seem right, but you'd have to mix it into the thing and then lay it flat again, I'm assuming. Is that the proper way of doing that?
Typically with a conditioner, it is surface-applied. And then, and the benefit of that is that if it doesn't work, it can actually be swept up. So what you're trying to do is, much like when you're scarifying, what you're trying to do is create that cap, and that provides that little bit of give on that top surface for both sliding and for playability of balls. So if you were to go for a whole new mix, that would be evenly distributed, but with field conditioners in particular, they tend to be surface-applied rather than mixed in in its entirety.
And do you know if we have one of those nail drags?
I don't know.
Frida?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so we have the proper tools, and it sounds like to maintain what you're saying recommended wise. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilman Strong? Yes, thank you. The recommended trial use of field conditioner, would you recommend that primarily for field number one, the one that was the hardest?
Suppose that's a tricky question. Yes, that is the hardest. I don't know if they're all get that hard. You know, I would say, in my opinion, maybe try it on a field that is not the most-used field, just in case. So maybe one that is used, I wouldn't, from time to time, so you can get an accurate view if it's working, but I would probably preserve your prime field to make sure that that product was going to suit your needs first.
Okay, and then when you say consider an alternate product, under what circumstances would you change that to recommend an alternate product?
So, subjectively, if we're designing fields, which we do, we would use an alternate product.
You would?
We would. My personal opinion is that mix does compact, and I don't, I prefer a mix with more clay.
Okay.
Objectively, this feed, this mix is used all over the country.
All right, but your recommendation is we go to something else?
I would recommend trying the field conditioner first.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
That was the question I had, sir. Thank you.
Very good. I have a question, maybe Julie or Frida can answer this. The nail drag equipment was brought up. Do we have the appropriate equipment to handle those fields?
She said we do.
We've got the tractor to pull it and the whole thing?
Yes, sir, we do, and we're actually prepping fields now once per week using that equipment.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, for the question, yeah, Frida, so that's what I was going to ask you too, was, you know, if we're still trying to involve volunteers to help with this maintenance. And I guess they're not allowed to use our equipment as city-owned, but they have their own tractor pulls and that sort of thing?
They have their own equipment, that's correct.
Right, okay, and they use the same scarifiers and everything?
I don't believe that they have the same equipment that the city has access to, no.
Could we get a figure on what that would cost? In other words, give them the tools to do it right? In other words, how much would it take to give them the right thing?
I think the issue goes back to who, you know, they can use our tools, they just can't use our power equipment for insurance purposes and liability.
Right.
So, you know, I can, we can get you numbers on new equipment, but for city equipment, it's run by city staff.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Other council questions? Mr. Strong?
Yes, so the scarifier, that's not power equipment though, right?
It is pulled by a power tractor, yes.
Okay, so do they have a power tractor of their own?
They have a, and Mr. Dos is here, who's very familiar with that, but I believe it is a Gator or a golf cart, is that correct? Tractor.
And would that be sufficient to pull the scarifier?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you were doing it once a day. I think it was recommended to be done between games?
So what, the once a day, we, the city, is now doing it once a week. We were doing it once a year. We were reconditioning the fields once per year, and the volunteers and other contractors were prepping the rest of the time. Right now, we've made some accommodations and other tasks, and we're prepping the fields once per week, full preps with full scarification, moisture addition, and all the rest of the steps that takes for field prep. Other than that, the volunteers and contracted staff for these, these organizations are still prepping the fields.
So would it be possible to allow them to do it once a day?
They do it more than once a day when they're using the fields.
They do?
On tournaments, yeah.
Right, thank you. Councilman Gregory?
So the gentleman from the architect shops, what's your recommendation on maintenance on the fields?
So when we're talking about daily use, we're really talking about a different product, which is a mat drag. So that is picture a flexible metal mat that gets dragged to evenly distribute the finds after it gets kicked up from positioning from sliding and such. In terms of the scarification, I think once a week is great. So we would recommend multiple times throughout the season, but if you're doing it once a week, that's outstanding in our opinion.
And is the dragging device, I call it like dragging a chain link fence, will that help get the clay, a mix if we add clay mix to it to get it in, or you need the scarifier for that?
That will evenly distribute it throughout the field, or it should. So if it starts clumping up, I think a lot of times what you'll start seeing is that it will start moving or migrating towards the edges of the infield, towards the turf. And so the best part of that is that that will redistribute that throughout the infield. The scarification would get it in, but I think with the scarification, the key is you don't really want to go a whole lot more than half inch in depth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
One more, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Christian. In your investigation and your report, is there a way we can get, I think, a list of the proper way that you would recommend? In other words, education is great with everybody that's going to be volunteering, but if we have something written form that this is what you do for these kind of conditions, does your report put that out for us so we can hand that over to staff and also the volunteers?
You know, as it's currently stated, the report does not provide maintenance guidelines, but that's certainly something that could be added.
Yeah, I think that would be kind of important, or at least reaffirm that what we're doing is correct anyway with your advice. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Frida, quick question. This is a presentation. There's no action tonight. Do we anticipate an action item coming back at a future meeting now?
As part of the budget process, we'll be proposing some adjustments to staffing to accommodate more field prep.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions from council? Mr. Gregory?
To ensure a better season, is there a way we can have an answer faster than our budget process?
It's a great question. So as Ms. Berman and Ms. Dolan had referenced, the city currently is outsourcing additional work that we were doing tree maintenance and others things. The team has identified some ways to free up staff time to be able to do additional prep now. So instead of the once per year that we were doing and relying mostly on volunteers and contractors, we're getting out there once a week and trying to return the fields to the best condition. I think there are some options that we can look at. at immediately that don't require council actions, such as, you know, taking the recommendations here today regarding field mix and experimenting with different things to see where we want to go. I think those are all prudent, reasonable steps. And then based upon, you know, what the, the council's pleasure is with respect to how often we want to maintain, if we want to take it all back, if we want to do a blended mix, I think that requires a little bit more discussion to make sure that we hit the, hit the mark and meet expectations, not only the council but the community.
Very good. Once again, presentation item, no action. That being said, is there anybody in the room who would like to comment on this item? This is your opportunity. If you have the opportunity to get a speaker identification card back there, that's very helpful to us. We ask you to give us your name so we know who's speaking and we give you three minutes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to see the council with all your faces present now. Dale Augustin, 945 Spring Street. I've tried to become a farmer after retiring as an attorney and working with the different soils. The only thing about adding too much clay is you get heavy rain, it gets hard packed.
Very good, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to comment? Is there anyone online? No one online? We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. Once again, no action required. If there's no further question or comment, we're going to move forward. Thank you. It is now quarter after seven. This is as soon, as close to seven o'clock as we can make it. Legally, we are required to hold our public hearing regarding community input on proposed draft district maps, composition of district boundaries and communities of interest. So we're going to move that on the agenda right now and we'll get a staff report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor Martin and members of council. As you know, this evening, we're holding the third of four public hearings on redistricting. In April of 2019, the city of Paso Robles adopted ordinance 1071 NS, establishing by district elections for four council members and defining district boundaries and scheduling the order of election for each district based on the 2020, excuse me, based on the 2010 census data as required by law. Every 10 years, cities with by district election systems must use new census data to review and if needed redraw district lines to reflect the local population's changes. And we are using obviously the 2020 census data and the city has hired NDC, a consultant for redist, for the redistricting process. And Shalise Tilton, senior consultant with NDC, will be giving a presentation based on the maps that have been submitted. With that, I will turn it over to her.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council members. It's my pleasure to be back here to introduce draft maps to you tonight based, as was mentioned, on the 2020 census. Next slide, please. The law requires there to be four public hearings. The first two public hearings were held in August and October. We're here, this is the first opportunity that the city council will have to look at draft maps. And the, our intent tonight is to hopefully identify a focus map or focus map that can be brought back on April 5th for adoption. The law requires that maps be adopted by April 17th. Next slide. There are new laws in place since the city created its districts, but however, the city did use the same criteria, it just wasn't mandated. But now we have mandated California criteria. The federal laws haven't changed, equal population, so each of the districts must have near equal population in each of the, each of the districts. The ideal population per each of the four districts would be 7,892. We can't draw districts in a way that would dilute the voting power of our protected class groups and we can't draw a map based solely on race. The second column is, is the new mandated criteria according to the Fair Maps Act, but as I mentioned, it's the same criteria that the city based its previous districts on, so it's not much different than what you saw before, other than it's mandated and explicit in order of priority. Geographically contiguous, undivided neighborhoods, communities of interest, easily identifying both boundaries and compacts. And then once we've met those criteria, we can look at other traditional principles such as minimizing the voters that are shifted to different election years, respecting the voter's choices and continuity of office that often deals with if we're able to draw a map that avoids carrying incumbents, then we present that option. We can slightly underpopulate the districts, but no more than, we can have no more than a 10% deviation between the greatest populated districts and the least populated districts, but we can slightly underpopulate within that 10% margin. And preserving the core of the existing districts can also be a consideration. Everything in that third column is optional. Next slide, please. Would we look, analyze the existing current boundaries to see if, if the city council had the option of just adopting its existing boundaries? We found that we were not able to adopt, adopt the existing boundaries. We saw more growth in District 1 and 2 than we did in District 3 and 4, making the overall deviation 17.44%. So we see the least populated district is District 4, the greatest populated district is District 2. So when you add those two together, we're beyond the 10% allowable. The other columns that you're seeing here is total population by race and the citizen voting age population is another important category. And often it's focused on when we're able to get a near majority of a single protected, of a protected class group. However, the city does not have any particular area that's geographically concentrated enough to get near 50% in any single district. In fact, the highest we're able to get for the Hispanic or Latino protected class is 29% and that's holds true for all of the maps that are being presented. Next slide, please. Presented, we'll be presenting tonight three maps, the green, orange, and the teal map. As we go through each one, I do want to point out that from the city's website, you're able to click on these links that will give you, one, either map details, the interactive review map will give you street details and you can zoom in very closely to these boundaries, see the streets. You can even change the underlying base map to show a satellite image. You can type in your, your address to see exactly where you, what district you would be in any of the proposed maps. And then also a printable version of each map, along with a complete demographic summary that shows various other categories, socioeconomic categories is also available on the city's website. Next slide. The green map is representation showing the least possible changes and keeping much intact the existing districts as, as possible. The small map that we're seeing in kind of the lower right-hand corner is just a comparison of the existing districts. We're seeing minimal change in this, in this map just for population balance. So the, the downtown areas of the population shift by moving, by making that boundary be mostly along 15th Street. And then the other change would be District 4 picks up all of the Quail Run Estates, which was mentioned during the previous public hearings, and we're able to do so this time. You recall last time we removed districts, there were some funny census blocks that made that near impossible, but fortunately, the geography is in our favor now and we're able to put all of Quail Run Estates in District 4. This particular map has an overall deviation of 7.2%, so we are within the 10%. Next slide. Next is the orange map showing just different options for, for the council to consider the, in District 1, the east boundary and actually instead of codisplain, that should say one of this, I will make that change. And then you'll, and you'll see the district, the boundary between District 1 and 3 uses 13th Street. District 2 also includes the area between Union and Crescent Road and then extends southeast to include the Butler Elementary School area. And then District 4 extends north to include the airport and all areas east of Golden Hill and Crescent Road. Next slide. And the teal map shows a different variation of that. District 1, the east boundary uses Golden Hill and the 15th Street is used as the boundary between District 1 and 3. And District 2, again, also picks up the area between Union and Crescent Road and extends north to Highway 46. District 3 picks up the Butler Elementary School area and District 4, again, extends north, includes all of the air, all of the areas, includes the airport and the areas east of Golden Hill and Crescent. Next slide. The election year will stay the same as it, as it is. The law requires that it stays the same. The council could switch around the numbering on the map, that would be somewhat unusual, but the, the city council does have, does have that prerogative. For now, we're proposing the same election sequencing and the same positioning of the districts as they are currently numbered. Next slide. So for tonight's public hearing, we're wanting to hear from the public and the council on which maps, which maps you prefer or maps you prefer, if you'd like us to make any modifications to those maps. We'd like to give that direction and possibly narrow it down to a focus map so the public can hone in on that map and, and provide comment on it in anticipation of the upcoming meeting in April. And I believe that is my last slide and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that report. We appreciate the information. There is a lot of it there. Again, as always, we await the community's input before offering our thoughts, but before moving to public comment, let's ask if there are any questions of clarification from the council. I'm seeing no one nodding their heads up and down. In that case, we will open public comment. This is your opportunity to speak. We ask you to come forward. If you are present here physically, give us your name and we will give you three minutes. And if you're standing in line online, we will get to you in due course. Welcome, sir.
Good evening again, council. Dale Augustin, 945 Spring Street. I don't know how much the green map deviates from the current map. I understand the current map was based on the 2010 census and this is based on the 2020. And I'm assuming we'll have to do this again in 2030. I don't know, but I, I understand why law, by law, you're required to do this of being a prior attorney, but gosh, I remember Kenny Parrish was elected at large and he had black skin. Our current council person, female, is also Hispanic and she was elected at large. And I just wish we could have gone back to the old way of doing it at large, but good luck on this one.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to comment? Seeing no one coming forward, is there anyone online who would like to speak?
No, sir.
We have no public comment waiting online. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. And we have recommended actions here. Mr. Strong?
Well, I'll make one comment and, and, you know, I don't mind having the smallest district, but the one thing that they said about Quail Run is not quite true. Quail Run has one voting district that actually extends into the subdivision immediately to the north. So that the only maps that actually include all of Quail Run would be the two, the second two maps, which also go all the way up to the airport.
So you're talking about orange and teal?
Yeah.
Okay.
And teal makes the fewest differences in where people live changes because it doesn't include a lot of what is north of Highway 46 that's populated. It does have a lot of industrial areas, it does have this college, it has the airport, it has those things, but it has very little population over there.
Very good.
So it does keep it in population-wise pretty equal. Any other comments? Mr. Hammond?
I was just going to make a note. It looks like from staff report, the next steps that we need to do is get it back out to public for any revisions that they may have. And then I guess we come back and talk about that and then we identify preferred map that we're going to want to put out and then direct staff to bring back on ordinance, accepting that map.
My, my understanding of our conversation tonight is we will indicate a preferred map and make any, make recommendations regarding any revisions and then that'll be circulated to the public for further public comment. Is that correct?
Correct, that would be the ideal. If you want to, you can, you can continue. We can have another hearing if we needed to, but yes.
So we don't have to state a preference tonight, but it's, we could just?
You're not required to, but I think it would be the consultant's preference if you did have one, so we could try and narrow the focus so that when we come back at the next meeting, it's a little bit more focused.
And if the council were to have a preference, would we execute that by a motion?
Yes.
Elizabeth, are we on like a time-sensitive date? That April 5th is important?
Yes, the, you have to finalize your map by April 17th, so we could do the 5th, we could do, we couldn't get one more meeting. The 5th would be our last choice unless we held a special meeting.
We could, the 15th of March, if we needed to, we could do another meeting then.
Oh, we could come back a week, a meeting earlier, true.
15th of March versus the date you realize, I'm not here. I'm in Washington DC. Mr. Gregory?
So I don't know what you call each of these maps, but the one up, upper right as we're looking at it, does that have Quail Run in it? It looks like it does.
Yeah, on District 4.
So are you going to do straw vote? You want motion?
Yeah, so hang on a sec. So is our, is our consultant still online?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The question was, does the green map contain all of Quail Run?
No.
How do you know what color these are?
The green map shows Quail Run in District 4.
However, the green map actually, there, the outer perimeter of Quail Run is actually a divided, it's part of the same voting district as is in the very southern end, just above it, in District 2. So actually, the outer rim of Quail Run does not sit in Quail, in District 4, even though the map shows it that way. That's not where they vote.
Yeah, and the voting precincts could likely change, as, as they typically do after you, the maps are created.
So do you have any idea of how many people are, who are in Quail Run are excluded from District 4 in the green map?
They're actually in Quail, Quail Run, I can tell you what, it's the back part of the, of the Quail Run Estates. So all of the Quail Run homes are in there. In the interactive map, if you do the underlying satellite image.
Okay, so I, I just, and I don't want to usurp anybody's comments, but I would like to see a map geographically that is not very significantly from the first one that we passed two years ago. I'd like to ask Councilman Strong, and I don't, I don't understand, what is the significance of having, as you say, a sliver or a border there not in the same district?
Well, it's not the border. It's a, it's a weird district because if you see that, that big arc?
Yes.
All of the outer side of that arc, that lower arc, is not in District 4, even though it looks like it's way into District 4. It's actually part of the voting district that's up in that very bottom area of District 2.
Could we get the consultant to comment on that, please?
Yes, that is correct for the existing map. That would not be the case for the green map. And the, and the registrar will change the voting precinct based on the green map.
Oh, if they'll chase, if they'll change the precinct, then that's fine.
Okay, so.
Yes, yes, they change the precinct. The voting precincts will align with whatever map you select.
So we've clarified and answered Councilman Strong's concerns. Your question, Mr. Gregory, was do we take a straw vote? I would entertain a motion for a preferred map at this point if we have strong feelings.
I'll make a motion that we approve the green map. I think it's.
We prefer the green map.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's too stretched out.
We motion my Councilman Gregory second by Councilman Hammond that we prefer the green map, comment by the city attorney.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not actually approving one, we're just making a recommendation as to what our preferences.
Exactly.
Just a map.
A recommendation.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Strong?
The only thing I'd say about the green map is it makes a drastic difference to District 2 because District 2 currently, I think, includes everything all the way up and including the airport.
You can, you can see the, and the, the small image, District 2 stops at 46 in the existing map.
Oh, does it? Oh, okay. Yeah. All right. Any further conversation? Roll call, boys.
Councilmember Gregory?
I recommend the green map.
Hi, Fred.
Hi. Councilmember Hammond?
Hi.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Councilmember Strong?
No.
Mayor Martin?
Aye, motion passes 3 to 2. Thank you very much. I believe that's all the business we have to take care of on that.
Unless you wanted to have discussion about other maps or other revisions to that map, but yeah, I think you're done.
Okay. Any further comments?
No.
Very good. Okay, we're going to go back to our regular agenda then. We hop back We hop back now to general public comments. This is the time the public may address the council on items within the council's purview but not scheduled on the agenda. If you would please begin by stating your name and address. Each person limited to three minutes. Any person or subject requiring more than three minutes may be scheduled for a future council meeting or referred to committee or staff. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make a general public comment? Seeing no one come forward, is there anyone online?
No, sir.
No one online? We will close general public comments, and thank you very much. I'll ask the city manager if we have any agenda items to be deferred tonight.
No, sir, we do not.
We move on then to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if discussion is wanted by a member of the council or the public, the item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Council members and members of the public may offer comments or ask questions of clarification without removing an item from that calendar. Individual items are approved by the vote that approves the consent calendar unless an item is pulled for separate consideration. Items pulled from consent will be heard at the end of the meeting. I will ask city council if they have any questions or would like to have items polled. Mr. Hammond?
Question for five, maybe Christopher Alack.
Sure. Go ahead.
Christopher, on that item, we're getting a consultant basically to start doing the water services study, rate study. When are we planning to talk about a rate increase? What's the forecast for that?
So we're just wrapping up the city's water master plan now. That's a key piece to developing and doing a comprehensive rate study to try to understand what our infrastructure needs are now and moving into the future, so that'll be folded in. We're wrapping that up now. We're going to kick this off with the consultant to begin the rate study. We'll be able to feed him that information. That rate study is probably going to take around three months, four months to complete, and then we'll be coming back to council with our findings.
Okay. And then the plan is to come off of that rate study with any kind of an action that we want to try and do from that?
There'll likely be some rate adjustments that'll be recommended for 2023, and for, you know, develop a five-year rate plan that'll be implemented starting 2023.
And that would have to go through a 218 process?
That's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Any other council questions or items to be removed? None? I'll ask people in the public if there are questions of clarification or they would like items removed. Welcome.
Again, Dale Augustin, 945 Spring Street. I'd request number seven be pulled.
Number seven is not on the consent calendar. Number seven isn't on the consent. It is not on consent.
No.
Public hearings.
Public hearings. Anyone else? Anyone online? Very good. We have no one asking questions or asking for items to be removed. I'll bring it back to the council and entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Mr. Gregory?
Yep. I move we approve items three through five on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. There's no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And if the city manager would give us a short report on what we just did?
Very short report. I think you got an update on one of them, item number five, which is the... What Mr. Alack will just refer to as the rate study for water. The other two items are common. They are the approval of the city council minutes from February 15th, and the item number four is the receipt of the water warrant register, which is the ins and outs of funds coming in from the city since the last city council meeting.
Thank you. And as usual, I'd like to remind folks listening in that the passable city council agendas are available online on prcity.com, including links to all the staff reports. So if you're interested in digging into some of these details, you have the opportunity to do it, and you'll be reading the same materials that we do before we meet. So prcity.com. Public hearings, item number seven, approval of 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the Annual Action Plan. Mr. Nash?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, members of the council, this is the action plan for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program. Back in December of 2021 was the draft action plan where the council went through the applications for 202022 and came, gave staff direction to come back tonight with the final action plan. As you recall, these are federal funds allocated through the county, benefit low-income persons and eliminate blight. City funding priorities, typically what we do is we take a look at the share that's going to come through the city, we take a look at a public improvement project, we take a look at public service programs, and to help administer those is the administration portion of the grants. So the allocations were anticipating around $235,000 for this program year for 2022. $188,000 can go through projects and programs, and $47,000 is administration, administration is both with county administration and the city. Of that, about $150,000, $153,000 is what we're proposing as the public improvement project, the 15% of $35,000, the public services, and then the administration. And just a reminder, the administration is 13% of that administration amount is we're in a cooperation agreement with the county. They do quite a bit of work on this program, including environmental clearances and things for these funds. So around $30,000 of the $47,000 would go to the county. About $16,000 would remain with the city for administering programs. The public project that we're looking at with this year is some infill sidewalk curb ramps for 17th Street. This will go hand in hand with a previous year, I believe, 2020 17th Street project as well. So with the funds from 2020 and the funds from 2022, basically from Spring Street all the way past the school, infill sidewalks, upgrade curb ramps for this as a safe route to school area, so that's what we're looking at improving this corridor. So back in December, the draft action plan was the $152,000 towards the 17th Street project, funding the four public services as well as the administration. If you recall back in December, the original staff report had three public service applications. We were notified by the county there was a fourth, and that was the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. Jana Nichols, the executive director of the homeless services, spoke to the council that night and indicated that they were requesting a $3,500 grant amount. The council's direction at the time was for staff to come back tonight with a scenario to fund that five CHC grant. At the time, the input was to take the $3,500 from people's self-help housing, and that's what that Section B public service is showing. I think the main intent for council was to find a way to fund the $3,500. One option we have is this option three would be to take out of the four applications and evenly take funds from those grants to make up for the $3,500 as opposed to take it from just people's self-help. So we have that option for you tonight, and that's option three. Option two was to take all of the $3,500 from people's self-help housing. Option three, distribute it amongst the other applicants. However, these are the options for you tonight. We recommend option three, which is what the council saw back in December with the minor amendments to fund the homeless services for five CHC. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Whenever we go through this process, I always have people ask me what CDBG funds are and where they come from. Could you explain that, please?
Absolutely. So these are funds that come from the federal government. They are processed through the county, and the county gets a certain amount for all of individual cities as well as the county. The county administers the program. The kind of the historic use of Community Development Block Grant funds was to eliminate blight, to work on public projects such as the 17th Street project that I indicated is, you know, taking a look and seeing what can be done for the community. There's a lot of rules and regulations, making sure that these benefits are in areas that would help, whether it's handicapped or low-income or seniors. So there's a lot of factors that need to be involved with these decisions being made, but in general, that's the program we come with each year. There are the... There is the public service component, so from time each year, we get typically three to five applications for public services. We can only allow a certain percentage. We can't go beyond that percentage, even though sometimes there's that question of can we give more to certain services?
Thank you. Are there other council questions? Mr. Gregory?
So Darren, the CHC homeless services, how are they helping us here in Paso Robles?
They have various... They have various properties, I believe, that they're working on, whether it's rentals or not. I know that Mrs. Nichols gave us a good rundown back in December. I'm not sure if she's present tonight to be more specific. Sounds like she is, so I think I'd ask her that question. She can fill you in.
Other council questions? Nope. Thank you very much. We will open it for the public for comment. This is your opportunity. Please come forward to the lectern, and if you're online, we will answer your questions in a moment. Welcome.
Dale Augustin, 945 Spring Street. I've been through a lot of these every year, and I always have a hard time justifying the percentage for administration. It's not an actual calculation of what it costs to administer the program. It's a percentage, and they take out, and I think it's not justified. But on the other thing is, I'm hearing two figures, one of $204,000 and then another one, $235,000, and then I'm hearing administration is $16,000 and $47,000. I'm confused about which one of these figures is actual.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? Seeing no one come forward, is there anyone online?
Yes, sir. First is Wendy Lewis.
Welcome, Wendy.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Martin. I'm Wendy Lewis with El Camino Homeless Organization. I would just like to thank the city and the city council for the years of support utilizing the CDBG funds to help ECHO and help us ultimately get people back into housing. I just wanted to reiterate that we are grateful for that, and I'm here to answer questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else online?
Yes, sir. Next is Jana Nichols.
Welcome.
Councilmembers, thank you very much. This is Jana Nichols from the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. And as we have five cities in our name, I just want to affirm that our housing support program is in fact open and working with everyone within the county of San Luis Obispo, including those citizens of Paso Robles. I will say that CDBG funding is a unique opportunity in that it allows us to help folks who are of a slightly higher income bracket than some of our other funding sources. So this allows us to go up to 80% AMI as opposed to those at 50% AMI. We provide housing services to help people move into housing, both with deposits, application, and rental assistance. And I appreciate the consultation we've had with your staff and with your consideration tonight. We work with all of our partners, so it's not a who should get first. I will simply say, we did just have a written time count on Wednesday of last week, and it will not be surprising to you that we have a significant number of people falling into homelessness who may not have been there otherwise. We are also looking at homeless prevention issues that this grant could potentially assist with in terms of helping people not fall into homelessness, and that problem will be continuing as the state runs down its own assistance program. So we're looking at both the issue of moving people into housing as well as homeless prevention and keeping people in their homes countywide, and we do this concurrently with our partners, and any consideration is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else online?
No, sir.
No one else online? I will close the public comment, bring it back to council for discussion and action. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a few comments. I actually prefer option two. The reason why is Capslow, the Adult Care Center, it's the only type of facility like this in the county, and I don't want to take anything from their budget. I'd also like to keep ECHO where it is, but I don't mind sharing some of the money with the Five Cities Homeless Center because they do work on housing projects in Paso. So I like it's... I guess option two or item B is what I prefer. That keeps the money in Paso. Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
Well, yeah, I kind of agree that option two is really the better one, but number three actually enhances two, where it pulls a little bit of money back, gives the Five Cities Homeless there. So personally, I would think three would be a better one. See what the rest of the council feels like.
Mr. Strong?
First of all, I'd like to answer Dale Augustin, and that is that both figures are correct, Dale, because the total administrative cost includes county administration and city administration. The $16,000 is the city portion of that administration. The $47,000 is the total amount of administration, including the counties. All right? And then I prefer recommendation option three.
Thank you. Comments? Councilwoman Garcia?
I would also go with option three.
I would entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, then to adopt item option three, which allocates the option two but equally reduces the initial three public service grants by $1,100, $67, to fund $3,500 to Five Cities Homeless Coalition grant.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Strong. There's no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
No.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. We have no discussion... Mr. Strong? What did I say? He passes 4-1. I never conquered higher math. I'm sorry. No discussion items tonight. We move on now to city manager report.
I was on. Sorry about that. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, I do have one thing to update the community on. This is from Admin Services, Mr. Cornell's department. The COVID-19 still continues to rear its head in ugly ways and weird ways of all things, but I think we reported last time that the city's water meter reading company was having challenges. That continued into this month again. We're working with them diligently to try and rectify the situation, but it's certainly in the many years that we've used this service, never had this problem up until the last two months, and we're confident that we're going to be able to resolve the situation. But they just started reading meters today, and they're usually read by about the 20th of each month, so we're past that. We're into a new month now. And the problem with this means that our seasonal sewer average calculations may not be as accurate as they would have been with the additional days of water use. So we're still developing recommendations to try and remedy this. It's complicated based upon some of the rules that we have to follow, but in the short term, there isn't a quick fix for this. We're looking at potential remedies in the long term, so we don't have to face this again, but as of right now, that's the situation that we're in with regard to sewer meters.
Yep. Aren't we still on that January, February, March? It used to be January. December.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Ryan Cornell, Admin Services Director. We did in the last wastewater rate study, changed the seasonal sewer period, so now we're only looking at two months out of the year, but a three-year look-back period. So it went down from just a three months in any one given year to two months, three years back. And so what we're running into is that two months that we're actually looking at is kind of extended more than six days. So the seasonal sewer period typically runs about December 20th to February 20th, but because we haven't... We're just now starting to read meters today. We're 11 days past that February 20th date.
Okay. Continuing. Just a couple of quick updates on our park situations. You got one regarding Barney Schwartz, the... You got one regarding Barney Schwartz this evening as well, but I wanted, I've talked to council about this, but wanted to let the community know, especially those that are interested in pickleball, that we've had a couple setbacks with regard to our design and construction of those based upon basically a creek that has kind of challenged our our construction plans for that. So staff is working on an alternate plan to try and move this along without delaying too much, but it all has to do with flooding. We don't want to flood our new pickleball courts and have them destroyed. We want them playable and workable for everybody, so we're working through that process now, and it it has the potential to impact our whole parks master plan as well. So it's going to be a little bit of a challenge for us. It's not just on the pickleball side of things, it's on the on the whole park side of things. You got the update regarding the rehab of the softball fields, but I'm happy to report too that staff worked diligently with youth baseball to rehab all the city baseball parks as well. So that's a good thing. Another good job by our staff to, I think the quote was that those fields have been brought up to major league baseball quality. So that's another positive development there. We are planning a joint city council meeting for the council, the design review committee, and the planning commission to talk about spaceport at the end of the at the in approximately a month's time, so that way we can bring forward all the information regarding our feasibility study, talk to council and the other groups about making decisions long-term on what we're going to do there. Broadband has been on everybody's mind as well. City staff has been, including the mayors from Atascadero and Paso Robles, have been meeting to discuss a joint broadband plan for the North County, so we're working on that. As luck would have it, this is also a broader discussion between the city managers for a regional San Luis Obispo plan as well. So staff is moving full full steam ahead to try and determine as far as our budgeting goes, how much money we're going to need to get this plan together, and working with our regional neighbors to advance broadband in our communities. Of course, we had a budget workshop this past Saturday, which I thought went really well. I appreciate city council's effort and the community's effort into helping us get those goals identified so we can get those back to council quickly. And of course, most of our development projects are still moving forward, and I think that is all that I have to report to council.
Very good. Thank you. We move on now to council business committee reports. Mr. Gregory?
We had Mayor Martin and myself met with Supervisor John Bishong on last Friday. I went to a meeting with our new assistant city manager, Chris, and Paul Sloan, to a meeting with Travel Paso, the Chamber and the Wine Alliance, to have kind of a workshop to get everybody to work together and form a coalition and a collaborative effort for marketing our community and going in better directions. So there'll be some information coming out on that. And then I, too, was at the course of the budget workshop, and I wanted to say thank you to all the staff for that. That was very nicely done. It's always good to hear from everybody on that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, one more. Congratulations to Mr. Alek. Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again.
Microphone?
Talk about, and maybe you would integrate with Matt Thompson in our public works about IWMAs. We're coming up a week from tomorrow to adopt the new JPA. If you recall, the JPA was a big contention with Paso Robles staying in IWMAs because of some of the things that just were in that. But now it's been revised, and I think we're happy to report that the two biggest things that I was always interested in was, you know, the fact that their powers, IWMAs' powers, are restricted to only state mandates. In other words, they can't do more than what is mandated by the state for integrated waste management facilities and programs. And then the other thing, too, is now that the county has left, we have five seats that are gone. We're down to an eight-member board, which means that it's an even number, which is always bad on a board. So we came up with the idea, because there are so many CSDs that are not actual cities that are still having to be part of the IWMAs because of their numbers and their density, they have to be, you know, in this group, that we're going to have instead of one CSD member, we're going to have two. That'll get us up to nine, which is, again, a tiebreaker kind of condition. So that is the two biggest things that we see. There's many that were kind of enforced by Paso Robles upon the group, and again, they all adopted every one that we were talking about. So again, with your blessing, you might want to review it, but I'll be voting, you know, in the positive to accept the new JPA for Paso Robles, and I think we can stay with that group and move forward.
Unless the council objects, we have we discussed this in public, and the points that we made with reference to revising the JPA according to Councilman Hammond are reflected in the new agreement, so I don't think there's any reason to, you know, question that move going forward.
If there's something that you've heard or you want to talk to me about, I'd be happy to go over it, but in general, staff and me especially are very happy with the new agreement, and I would recommend that we join it.
Very good.
Beyond that, I went to the National Water Commission. Nothing really major to report there. Everything's good. We're at twenty-nine percent at the lake, still pretty low, even though we have only ten inches of rain so far this year. Coming up, we have Paso Water Basin Committee this Friday for the Paso Basin. That's an upcoming meeting for me, and other than that, I think I'm caught up, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Main Street Board meeting, and Main Street had a very good presentation by a cannabis organization that is opening, in the process of going through the process of opening a delivery system for medical marijuana, but they also own retail facilities in other locations. And they went over a lot of things and a lot of the state law and a lot of chemical compositions of various products and what were what were addictive and what were not, and how they handled various things, and their security was absolutely amazing. So it was a very interesting thing. It took up over an hour of the meeting, so that was that's a long time for one of their presentations, but there was a lot of interest, no expression of support or or disapproval, just a lot of interest. So that pretty much was was as much of the meeting that is there is to report here. Other than that, nothing more here. What's coming up for me is tomorrow I have a meeting of the Regional Transit Authority, and we are having a grand opening of our new facility on San Luis Obispo. It's a new regional facility that's going to serve us for the next twenty-five to fifty years, and it's huge. It's it was very expensive also, but it's adequate to do the job. So that's 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 good news. And then I will be going to Washington, D.C., tentatively barring unforeseen circumstances on the eleventh of this month, and I will be back on the sixteenth, hopefully having made a little more progress on getting budget moved forward and our money released so that we can apply for the grants we need for some of our projects. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I actually also wanted to thank the staff for the Saturday goal-setting budget workshop. It was good to hear from the public and good to hear that we are in good standings, and we're looking forward to getting our goals set for the community. Another thing that I attended was the, we had a Hispanic Business Association Board meeting. We're looking to restructure and to set goals for the organization, so we are looking for new board members and to be able to get back into the groove of having mixers again now that COVID seems to be a little bit less out there, so we can actually meet again instead of doing all the virtual meetings that we were doing. I know that a lot of the Hispanic community and a lot of the Hispanic restaurants and businesses have been reaching out to us, to the HBA, wanting to know more help for, you know, business-wise and budget-wise for them, so we're hoping to get back on track to help them economically, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Had several opportunities to venture out into the public the last couple of weeks. Attended the Travel Paso Board of Directors meeting, county mayor's luncheon, which happens every month. Had a Zoom meeting with the staff members regarding the addition of a new airport website to our city website. We have an airport commissioner who has actually designed an airport website, and that's going to be linked up with our city website to make more information available to people who are interested in the airport and interested in the spaceport progress we're making here. So that's a big step forward for us, I think. Been in conversation with Mary Labarre from King City. I think I reported recently that we had conversations regarding a resolution that would bind our cities together in a non, you know, a non-monetary fashion, but in a council with our local military bases where we have common interests, we can work together on infrastructure problems and community service situations. That agreement's been forwarded to the city attorney, and that's being vetted at this point in time. I attended the viewing of a film called Now Hear This. Actually, it's an episode on PBS which features local classical music and had a lot of local locations that were part of the production. The Festival of Mosaic is involved with that, and a lot of lot of interest in that, very beautifully done, an excellent episode, and it really shows off our area well. I met with our Cal Cities representative, Dave Mullinex, to discuss channel, county's division schedules in the future. We're looking to the possibility of putting together some mini-conferences here in the city of Paso Robles. In the past, Cal Cities' model has been to hold major annual conferences, either Sacramento or Southern California, and now with COVID hopefully coming to an end, that will resume. But there's an opportunity to have mini-conferences, smaller organizations meeting in different cities, and I I proposed to them that we use downtown Paso Robles as a virtual conference center because we have the Park Cinemas, which offer a lot of ability to handle digital content in a very comfortable fashion, and would be able to handle daytime conferences very easily. And then, of course, we have our restaurants around the park. We have hotels that we could use for breakout rooms, and right now, Dave and I are working on possibly getting a mini-conference here in October, which could attract as many as two hundred people. So this is kind of a proof-of-concept idea. If it works well, it's something we could probably see repeated sometime in the future. Had our monthly meeting with the school district folks and folks in Questa College to discuss mutual issues. We've decided to hold those meetings once a quarter rather than once a month, and that's going smoothly. I attended the SLO Advisory Commission meeting, which is always a very brief meeting. Also, I attended the Community Unity Event, which was held by the diversity panel at Paso Robles High School recently, and I was able to address the Paso Robles Chamber of Commerce at the opening of their board retreat and give them an update of the city as part of that program on that day. Today, I was on soundoff at KPRL, and I just wanted to let people know that if they think they've been seeing TV stars in Paso Robles, they're probably right, because for the first time ever, NBC is videoing scenes here in Paso Robles for the show This Is Us, and they're using the Allegrato as a locale, and I understand we've had some of the crew out investigating investigating some of our other restaurants, too. So you weren't seeing things, you really were seeing TV stars in Paso Robles, which is great. Coming up, we have Downtown Parking Advisory Commission Special Meeting on Thursday, March the third, nine a.m. Development Review Committee meeting will be Monday, March the seventh, three thirty p.m. Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, March eighth, at six thirty p.m. Library Board meeting Thursday, March the tenth, at nine a.m. Senior Citizen Advisory Commission meeting Monday, March the fourteenth, one thirty p.m. Development Review Committee meeting Monday, March fourteenth, three thirty p.m. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting Monday, March the fourteenth, four p.m. City Council's next regular meeting is Tuesday, March the fifteenth, at six thirty p.m. So if you have nothing better to do, we've got lots of meetings for you to attend. Hope to see you there. If there's no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and tonight I would like to do that in recognition of the courage of the people of Ukraine as they continue to defend their homeland and do it bravely and honorably. So.
So moved.
Second to that one. Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for your hard work. Have a pleasant evening.